Thank you very much. We ought to get a roll call, Beth?
Commissioner Blanco?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Seaver?
Here.
And Chair Dickerson?
I believe so. Okay, then, moving on to approval of the Planning Commission minutes of April 20th. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at them and do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the April 20th meeting minutes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And I'm sorry, Heather wanted us to actually do a roll call on motions. Would you prefer that?
Frankly, I'm for efficiency as long as it's not a judge upon if there is a split.
Sure, okay, thank you very much. Okay, then moving along to the public comments period. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or is otherwise directed by the chair. This is for items that are not already on the agenda. I believe we have some written communication that's going to go into the record, is that right?
Yes, thank you Chair Dickerson. This is Dana Eadie, Planning Manager. Before we get started on the public comment, though, I did want to read some information for those who are on Zoom and might want to comment. So if you wish to comment on an agenda item, please use the raised hand icon on the Zoom platform. Once you're recognized, you will then be unmuted and allowed to comment on the business at hand in the order received. The maximum comment time is three minutes or is otherwise directed by the chair. And if you're calling in and wish to be acknowledged, please raise your hand by dialing *9 and identify yourself when unmuted. We did receive one written comment letter that I just want to go ahead and summarize into the record, and it's from Mr. Max Zappas, and he is the Home Builders Association President. And in the letter, he states that the Home Builders Association opposes project labor agreements. And just to summarize the letter, it's due to the costs of labor and insurance and that it discourages developers from investing in the area because they know they will face longer project timelines and higher costs. So this will be included in the record for today's hearing. And then I also have a hand raised on Zoom. And I just want to reiterate that this time is to make public comments on items that are not on the agenda today. So if you have a comment on any of the items that are on the agenda, that time to comment will come later. But it looks like Mr. Alex, oh, his hand was lowered, so we have no other comments.
There you go. All right. And anybody in the audience wish to care to make any comments, pontificate about anything? No? All right. Then we will move on to the regular public hearing items. We'll start off with the first item, which is the continued item Park Edge Mixed-Use Plan Development Permit and Conditional Use Permit at 2770 Santa Maria Way. And can we hear from staff?
Okay, yeah, thank you Chair Dickerson. Good evening. My name's Cody Graybell. I'm an associate planner with the city. And tonight I'll be presenting the Park Edge Mixed-Use Project, proposing 140 apartments, including 12 affordable units, a clubhouse, and multi-tenant commercial building with a drive-through at 2770 Santa Maria Way. This item has been presented at two separate study sessions. One was on February 3rd and March 17th, and was continued from the April 20th Planning Commission hearing to tonight. So this project is at the southeast corner of Miller Street in Santa Maria Way, and it is surrounded by a mix of residential and commercial development. And the project is between Miller Street and Sunrise Drive to the north and south, and Santa Barbara Drive and Santa Maria Way to the east and west. To the north of the site is a used car sales lot and a vacant lot. And the vacant lot does have a proposed senior housing project, which is Santa Maria Studios, that would add additional apartments in the future. And then to the south of the site is the Mission Creek Village subdivision. And to the east is Roddenberger Park and the Park Villas subdivision. And then to the west of the site is U-Haul and some commercial office space. And one thing to note, the future site of a DMV building is adjacent to the project site, and it's shown at the corner of Santa Maria Way and Sunrise Drive. So the site does include two different zoning designations. There's PDR 3, which is Plan Development High-Density Residential, and PDC 2, which is Plan Development General Commercial. And generally, the site's mixed by, surrounded by a mix, excuse me, of residential, commercial, and open space zoning. So the site includes three different parcels, and it does include an existing multipurpose trail that runs through the middle of the site. And the total site area is 7.47 acres in size. And generally, the lots are vacant, flat, and they do contain seasonally cut grasses and shrubs. There's a couple of trees, as well as a couple of old concrete building pads at the site as well. So this is looking onto the site from the intersection of Miller Street and Santa Maria Way. If you're facing southeast, so just about in the middle of the image is the existing multipurpose trail. And then this is looking onto the site from Santa Maria Way, facing east, down the multipurpose trail. And the red dash line indicates the approximate property line of the parcel along Sunrise Drive. So this nearest parcel is the future site of the DMV. And then this is looking onto the project site from Sunrise Drive, if you're facing north. And the wall shown in the background is the approximate boundary between the project site and then the adjacent park. So the existing trees behind the wall are part of the park. So the project is mixed use, and it does include both residential and commercial development. Part of the project does include a lotline adjustment and lot merger, which would create this revised configuration with one commercial parcel and one residential parcel. And the residential component does include 140 apartment units and a clubhouse for the residents of the apartments. The 140 units would be located in eight apartment buildings and would range in size from two to three stories. And then each of the units would consist of one and two bedrooms. And the clubhouse is located closer to the multi-tenant commercial building, and it would include space for common room usage, as well as a spa, pool, and a gym. And there are amenities provided, which include bike racks, benches, lawn areas, picnic tables, and propane barbecue stands, which would be offered for the residents of the apartments. And then the multi-tenant commercial space would be 5,435 square feet, and it could accommodate up to three tenants, including a drive-through. And generally, there's 287 parking spaces provided site-wide, and 194 spaces are required per the municipal code. And site access onto the commercial component of the project would be from Santa Maria Way and Miller Street, and then access into the residential component would be from Sunrise Drive and from Miller Street as well. And the project site would operate as one cohesive development with the multipurpose trail connecting all of the proposed uses together, as well as through the neighboring park. And this project does meet the objectives of the mixed-use ordinance because it improves the aesthetic of the built environment. It's connected by safe streets, sidewalks, and multipurpose trails, provides sufficient safe and accessible plazas and greenways for active and passive enjoyment, expands residential opportunities, reduces urban sprawl, and promotes infill development. So part of this project does include an affordable housing component and a density bonus, which is proposed by the applicant. And the maximum density of the site would allow up to 104 units, but based upon affordability proposed, with 11% of the units being restricted for very low-income earners, and 89% market rate, the applicant is eligible for a 35% density bonus, which is how we reach the 140 units proposed. And this project does comply with the state law and municipal zoning code regulations. So another component of the density bonus is that the applicant is requesting a concession from the city's zoning development standards, as allowed per state density bonus law. And the applicant is requesting to apply reduced setbacks, which is in the area shaded in blue, along the eastern property line for buildings two through five. And the state density bonus law does limit the city's ability to deny a concession request unless the city can show that the request does not add to the affordability of the project, or that the concession will have a specific adverse effect upon public health and safety or the environment. And similarly, the state's Housing Accountability Act generally limits a jurisdiction's ability to deny a project unless specific findings can be made. So staff does support the requested concession because it is consistent with state density bonus law, and because most of this encroachment is actually adjacent to a park space that happens to be zoned R1s, and only a small portion of the northeastern corner of the project site contains a single-family residence. But the yard area on that parcel provides over 100 feet of setback, so there is adequate buffer space for privacy. And in response to comments from the Planning Commission during the last study session, the applicant has revised the drive-through to now provide a double entry lane. So what's shown on the screen now is the original concept. And then this is the new concept with a double drive-through lane shown. So this revision did require the removal of some parking spaces, which is shown in the area in light blue, in order to increase the width of the drive-through. And that did create a parking deficit for the commercial component of the project. However, to compensate for the loss of spaces, the applicant has provided more parking on the adjacent residential portion, shown in yellow. And part of this permit approval, condition of approval number six in the permit, does require reciprocal access and parking agreement between the two parcels, which would ensure that the shared parking will remain. And additionally, the applicant did provide a drive-through queue study and transportation management plan, excuse me, by the associated transportation engineers or ATE, or the proposed drive-through lane. And it did ultimately determine that the proposal would provide sufficient queue space to avoid any stacking conflicts in the parking lot or any backing onto the adjacent streets. So staff has reviewed the updated drive-through and parking and does support the new configuration. Additionally, since the last study session, the applicant has included more traffic calming measures to lessen the potential conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles along the multipurpose trail. And those traffic calming measures reflect the recommendations from the traffic study provided, and they include the installation of speed bumps and signage. So the architecture proposed for each of the different project components hasn't changed at all since the last presentation at the former Planning Commission study session. And the design of the apartment buildings does incorporate multiple building materials, including board and batten, lap siding, as well as stone veneer columns. And there's also covered entries, painted trim, and changes to the building plane, which all add architectural interest to the buildings. And we're going to see two different building types today, and the primary difference is the paint scheme as well as the building height. One building is two, and then the other is three stories. So this is Building A. It's the two-story design, and it's 25 feet 9 inches tall. And this is the front and the rear. And then this is the two sides of Building A. And then this is Building B, which is the three-story option, and it's 34 feet 10 inches tall. It's the same design as Building A, and it's got consistent building materials and paint schemes proposed. And then this is the two sides of Building B. And the floor plan would be one- and two-bedroom unit options, which would range in size from 665 to 982 square feet. And each unit would have its own covered patio area and space for washer and dryer hookups. And then here's a rendering, which just provides a little bit more detail of the architecture. So the clubhouse is also consistent with the apartments, and there's been no changes since the last study session. And the floor plan would include a common area and gym for the residents, as well as a spa and pool. And then here's another rendering, and again, it's just showing a little bit more detail of the building. And then lastly, there is a proposed multi-tenant commercial building, which is a little bit more modern designed, and it does include brick veneer, corrugated aluminum panels, a metal storefront system, and cement wainscoting. And again, there's been no changes since the last study session. So these are the different elevations. The building itself would be one-story and 25 feet tall. From the top-left corner is the front elevation, and that would face the interior of the parking lot. And then the rear elevation in the top-right would face Miller Street. The bottom-left image would face internal to the apartments proposed. And then the bottom-right side elevation would face Santa Maria Way. And then the floor plan would provide up to three tenants, and is 5,435 square feet, and does include a drive-through. And then here's just one more rendering of the multi-tenant building. Landscaping is proposed throughout the site. A total of 26% site coverage is proposed and 20% is required. So there's just a wide range of drought-tolerant landscaping that would be proposed. And ten trees would be removed for the build-out of the project, and 137 trees would be planted in place, with 18 of those being street trees along the project frontages. And this is just showing a little more detail of the landscaping and the amenities proposed. They're really focused between the clubhouse, as well as the different apartments. And some of the proposed amenities include bike racks, barbecue pit areas, picnic tables, as well as lawns and pet waste stations. And then here's just some examples of the types of amenities proposed. An environmental review was completed for the project as required by CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. And an initial study and mitigated negative declaration was completed by Rincon Consultants for this project. And the potential impact areas identified in the study included air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, noise, tribal cultural resources, and utilities/service systems. And these are the areas that the consultant anticipated might have potential impacts, but it was determined after the required mitigation measures are implemented that the potential impacts would be less than significant. Additionally, a traffic study, as mentioned, and VMT analysis was completed for the project, and it did determine that the street networks currently operate at acceptable levels of service, and that additional traffic generated by the project would not create unacceptable service levels at adjacent intersections, and that impacts to VMT would be less than significant. Public comments were received on the initial study, and they were submitted by the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District, the California Department of Conservation Geologic Energy Management Division, the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, and the applicant. And none of the public comments were significant, and only minor changes to the initial study were required. And the initial study mitigated negative declaration, mitigation monitoring program, and the specific responses to public comments are included with the staff report.
Members of the commission chair, at this time, I'd like to add to the presentation, and more specifically about the environmental review and the additional comment letters that were provided. As Cody noted, one of the original commenters was the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters through an attorney firm, Michael M. Psy. And this item was originally scheduled for the April 20th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. And as the commission will recall, on that day, we received a second letter from the attorney, again, representing the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. That letter was extensive, into the hundreds of pages. And the late reception or receipt of that letter led staff to recommend that commission continue the item to this date, to allow city staff and our environmental consultant, Rincon Consultants, to review the content of that letter and see if any significant evidence was presented. The response to that comment letter by Rincon is provided also with the mitigated negative declaration that is in the commissioner's packet. And the conclusions regarding that April 20th letter are that there were no substantial evidence presented in the letter that would indicate the project would result in any significant impacts, or that the mitigation measures contained in the mitigation monitoring plan and the mitigated negative declaration were in any way insufficient to address any potential impacts to a level of insignificance. So that, as I mentioned, that response has been provided to the Planning Commission in the packet. Today, a third letter from the same attorney firm, again, representing the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, was received. Again, that letter was hundreds of pages. And we immediately, upon receipt of that letter this morning, provided it to our consultant, who at this time, if the commission so entertains, would like to present their review and conclusions regarding that letter and the mitigated negative declaration that has been provided to the commission. So at this time, Matty Magg, excuse me, Majors and Chris Burbotch of Rincon Consultants are available via Zoom to present their conclusions regarding this latest letter received only today. Is there any objection from commissioners to hearing the results?
No objection.
Yeah, we would like to hear them. Thank you, Frank. So Matty and Chris, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff, and members of the public. My name is Matty Majors, and I do work for Rincon Consultants. And as Frank mentioned, oh, sorry, I was getting some feedback. As Frank mentioned, we were the environmental consultant on this project, and we assisted with preparation of the environmental document. And we did thoroughly review those first two letters that were provided by the attorneys for the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. That first one during the public review period, and then the second one on the day of the April 20th hearing that was continued to today. And as Frank mentioned, we prepared written responses to both of those letters, and those are in your packet. And the environmental topics that we addressed in those responses included air quality, biological resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, land use, transportation, greenhouse gas emissions, and noise and cumulative impacts. And in addition to those environmental topics raised in the comment letters, we did go through and review the remainder of the environmental topics in the environmental document in light of those extensive comments, just to be sure that everything was evidenced well and all the conclusions were accurate. We have also reviewed the comments in the comment letter that was received today, to the extent possible, obviously, given the short turnaround with the, you know, 300-page letter that limits our ability to do a full detailed review. But we did determine that the majority of the comment letters from today appears to be identical to the previous letter that was received on April 20th, with a couple of additional memos regarding impacts to nesting birds, as well as noise from the project. We also noted that several components of the comment letter address jurisdictions other than the city of Santa Maria and regulations that do not pertain to the project or the city of Santa Maria, which obviously, in several instances, makes it difficult to ascertain exactly what the commenter is referencing. All that said, we did go ahead and dig into the new information that was presented in the letter. And we reviewed first the new information provided in the memo supplementing the comment on the biological section of the ISMND, particularly in relation to impacts to nesting birds, as well as the mitigation that would be required to reduce such impacts to a less-than-significant level. And based on the review of that memo and the ISMND, we determined that the analysis in the document is appropriate for the project, and that the required mitigation would avoid potential impacts to nesting birds and protected biological resources. Then we went on to review the new information provided in the memo that supplemented the comments on the noise section of the ISMND. And the analysis in the ISMND evaluates the potential effects to adjacent and nearby noise-sensitive receivers, and determined that potential operational noise impacts would be reduced below the thresholds of significance due to distance and intervening structures. Also, the ISMND included mitigation measure N1, which would reduce construction-related noise from the project to acceptable levels at nearby receivers. So in light of this information, we determined that the analysis in the ISMND is appropriate for the project, and that the required mitigation would avoid potential impacts associated with the short- and long-term sources of noise from the project. So ultimately, we determine, based on the reviews of these letters and our conclusions, we determine that the environmental topics raised by the attorneys for the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters are thoroughly and adequately evaluated in the environmental document based on substantial evidence. And we concur with staff that the new information provided in the comment letters does not provide evidence that the project would result in a significant unavoidable impact, such that it would need to be evaluated in an EIR. And we concur that the mitigated negative declaration that's been prepared and publicly circulated for this project, which is before you tonight, remains the appropriate environmental document for this project. So with that, I will hand it back to staff.
Okay, thanks, Matty. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following actions. By resolution, adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program. And by motion, approve Plan Development Permit PD 2020-0008 and Conditional Use Permit U 2020-0012 as conditioned. Thank you. The applicant is in attendance tonight, and staff and the applicant are now available for questions.
Thank you very much. Before I ask commissioners if they want any questions of staff, I will ask if there's any disclosure by commissioners of ex parte communication with the applicant.
No.
No? All right. Does, do any of the commissioners have questions of staff or the consultant at this time? No? All right. Then why don't we go ahead and hear from the applicant? And if you could state your name and your address for the record, please.
Evening, Planning Commissioners. Mr. Chair, I'm Ryan Schwartz, of Playing Concepts, 2624 Park Drive, Santa Maria. We typically have a PowerPoint presentation for you, but staff did a very nice job and a thorough job with the presentation. So I'm just going to say a few words. Before I do, I'd like to introduce the applicant, Damon Porter, Kelly Harrison of Dynamic Development. We've got project architect, Bob T., and then our engineer here, Russ Garrison, Bethel Engineering. That's our project team right now. So essentially, the project has gone through two study sessions. We've tried to listen to the commission and make some of the changes. Those changes have been outlined by Cody, some of those. Just to summarize, have been moving some of the units from the south to the north to try to balance the mix of units closer to the parking, incorporating the safety elements into the interface between the drive aisle and the multipurpose trail, and then increasing the capacity with the drive-through from 12 to 16. And also, there is also a mitigation measure or condition of approval that talks about a drive-through management plan that can be implemented as well for other techniques to help in case there's, you know, to- to help in case there's, you know, to help with the operations and the flow within the Other than the reduced setbacks adjacent to the park that we're requesting, and I think regardless of state density bonus law or the Affordable Housing Act, this project stands on its own merits. It meets or exceeds all the development standards other than the setbacks adjacent to the park. It's got 93 extra parking spaces on site above what's required. It exceeds open space, it exceeds landscaping. It, Cody's outlined that the amenities, both the public amenities for the multipurpose trail, as well as the onsite amenities for the residents, we think it'll be a nice place to live. It's a great infill location, close to parks, very separated from the other residences in the area. It's close to shopping, public transit right in front. So we believe it's a great location. It's consistent with the city's general plan, more specifically the housing element, which lists this site for high-density housing. We've reviewed the conditions of approval. We agree with them, and we hope you'll approve this project tonight. We're available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Brian. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? No? No questions? So let's go ahead and open this to the public, starting off with written communications. Is there any written communication?
Chair and commissioners, well, the only written communication that we had is what Frank summarized. It was the letter that he mentioned. We do have three hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. And do we have anybody in the audience? I didn't see any slips coming in. No? Okay, well, let's go ahead and start rolling through the Zoom then.
Okay.
And you might refresh their memory on it.
So the first speaker is Alex Perez. Alex, you should be able to speak now.
Hey, how you guys doing? Can you hear me?
Good, yep.
Good evening. My name's Alex Perez, and I'm a member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters and a representative--
Mr. Perez, can you also state an address for the record, please? Thank you.
Yes, sure. I reside in the Ventura County area, and specifically Newberry Park. But I'm a representative of the 2,000 members who make up Local Union 805, and I represent right around 700 members who live, work, and recreate in the vicinity of the project. Frankly, I'm tired of hearing the developers whine or complain about PLAs and paying fair wages with benefits. City councils, as you guys should keep in mind, that these out-of-town or in-town developers do not elect you guys into office. The community members do. We are happy that this project will boost the city's economic finances, but the city council should require these developers to use skilled and trained workforce within accredited apprenticeship program to boost the economic finances of the community members who elect you into office. This one not only, this one with no doubt also boosts the local economy. Let's all get economic boosts, not just the developers. Thank you for your time. Community matters.
Thank you. Alex, and just for clarification, we are the planning commission. We are appointed by the city council, so we actually are not voted in. It's the city council that's voted in.
Perfect, okay.
Can we hear the next person, please?
Yes, we'll go to the next one. Then I was reminded by Frank that we do actually have one other written comment that he'll summarize in just a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the next speaker is Manley McNinch.
What's the first name?
Manley.
Manley, okay. If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, Manley McNinch. I live in Orchid on Bradley Road, and I will directly be affected by this project. If, I mean, it's kind of obvious that you're going to go forward with the project, but the minimum you can do for the community in the area is to get rid of the unknown drive-through. I don't see how a study can legitimately be done on a drive-through when you don't even know what's going to go in that business. It could be the difference between a mom-and-pop shop, or Dutch Brothers, or Chick-fil-A, which is enormous amount of traffic goes to those places. But, you know, that's just a personal problem with it, which is, oh, yeah, I do live in the area, so, you know, like I say, I will be directly affected. Like what Alex said a minute ago, you know, on these projects, and it was obvious by the comment that was made earlier, that the developers don't care about the people that are building these projects. They just want them built. They want them done for the cheapest price they can get them for. And they don't care that everybody in the community is stuck with paying the spokes' insurance bills and stuff. Developers could easily require that kind of stuff to be done if you, the city, and the commissions would start requiring a better pay scale for these folks by using skilled and trained workforce requirements. And furthermore, on this project, we don't think the city's, we think the city's response raised in the S, in Southwest prior letter is inadequate and appears to be an attempt to adopt the ISMND without responding to the public comments fully. You know, have a good night.
Thank you very much, sir. Dana, can we have the next applicant?
Yes, so the last--
Oh, excuse me, the next speaker.
The last speaker is Pedro Toscano.
Pedro, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. My name is Pedro. I live at 556 Fillmore, California, and I am a representative of the carpenters that live in the vicinity of this project. And I have a statement for the homeowners association letter that was read firsthand. Labor shouldn't be considered an investment, rather, should be considered an investment rather than a cost. Everyone knows that, well, we've been talking about in all these meetings, we've just been talking about skilled and trained workforce. We just want, we just want to generate a fruitful economy for the whole town. All the money that's being spent, that gets generated in everybody's paycheck, should be spent in this town to fund the teachers, to fund the police, to fund the firefighters, to fund future projects, as long as we line it up with skilled and trained workforce. That's all we're advocating for. We're trying to create jobs for everybody in the community. The developers, they don't get it. They'll bring in their labor, like my coworkers have said previously, they'll bring in their labor from Riverside, from Bakersfield, and that money gets thrown back in those communities. It doesn't revolve around your community. I am from Fillmore, and I'm advocating for the members of Santa Maria. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Are there any further hands up?
No, there are no other--
Okay, and then we have an additional piece of communication, written communication? Is that right?
Yes, this email was received earlier today. It's from Gretchen Swinehart, who is the Air Force Housing Management Chief stationed at Vandenberg. And her comment, to quickly summarize, is that the construction of these additional one- and two-bedroom apartments will be a valuable addition to local housing inventory, including housing that could be used for military members. That concludes that comment.
Thank you very much, Frank. And no further? Okay, then we'll go ahead and, Brian, you guys want to do rebuttal to any of the comments? If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Damon Porter, Los Angeles, California, and Santa Maria. I've been a part of this community for the last 18 years, bringing wonderful projects to your city. And I just wanted to go on the record that most of the things that we've built in your city have used local subcontractors. I'm not only a developer, but I'm also a construction company, and we have embraced the local talent of this wonderful city. We don't run away, we are here. We were just at the Santa Maria Police Council Friday night, supporting the police department. We love this city. I would like to share a quick story. Unfortunately, I have reached out since January from the initial letter from the Southwest Contractors or Carpenters Union. Kind of came out of left field for me. We developed the Prisker and Broadway site, which has a beautiful hotel and a beautiful new pad of a restaurant, and we have another wonderful business that we're bringing. I was approached about four years ago by a gentleman who is a representative of the Carpenters Union, and I was like, oh, you're going to build an educational facility. That's fantastic. We are a supporter of education. We're a supporter of the Harmony Project. We're a supporter of everything that teaches people to be good humans and do better. I love that you're doing this. I'm supportive of it. I spoke on behalf of it. I contributed money to remove their trees so it would be a better site. And in January, when I got the letter, I reached out to them, and I said, do you realize that I was a supporter of your project at North Broadway? You forgot that, didn't you? All I got back was an emoji that said, Merry Christmas. I said, wow, that's how you want to treat the people that help you? I reached out to Manley McNinch several times to find out what he wanted from me. I was refused a conversation. I got him on the phone finally, and I shared the story. I shared that I was supportive of his property that he owned at North Broadway and Prisker. And now I'm still getting disrespected here by them on the Zoom. So I'm a little frustrated. I do good stuff. I love this city. I love the projects that we have here. We will continue to do good business. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have questions of the applicant at this time by commissioners?
I do have a question. There's a lot of talk about you bringing labor from out of town. You mentioned that you use local labor. Would you tell us if you're committed to using local labor on this project, and what are your plans to do that? That's the first question, and then I have a follow-up question.
Well, we're a general contracting company that uses subcontractors. So we submit and we receive bids, and usually the best person that's going to build a project is from this city, because they're local. They don't drive very far. They are in here, they come to the project, and they perform their work, and they don't have very far to go home. There are a few people that we've had that, yes, came from other places, I won't deny that, but sometimes they're on your team. I have team members that have been with me for 30 years. I wouldn't want to turn them down. But most of the places that we've used, we built your Viarta supermarket at North Broadway, built the hotel site, we built Refugio, we built some great projects. I would say probably 70% of them were from here.
Thank you. As to the local COVID rules or the state rules, it, I would think that you, as a developer, would make sure that they follow the state guidelines.
Of course.
So is that a commitment that you've made already?
Of course.
Thank you. That's it.
Further questions by commissioners? Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for maybe Brian or, is Rincon your environmental consultant?
Cities.
Cities, okay. Well, maybe this is for staff. What's in condition for of the traffic calming measures that, if the drive-through at the corner location gets out of hand, what kinds of tools are in that, could be in that plan?
Yeah, thanks for that question, Commissioner Lopez. So generally speaking, it lists a suite of options depending on the type of business that's implemented, such as like a employee that would specifically be responsible of managing the parking lot or establishing short-term parking so people could pull out of the drive-through and then wait for their, you know, food or beverages to be received. So it basically references best management practices that other drive-throughs have utilized.
Okay. So it's similar to what Chick-fil-A did in Santa Barbara?
Yeah, I'm somewhat familiar with that. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dana, did you have additional?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I don't know if that is a project that we would use as an example, the Chick-fil-A in Santa Barbara, but I think Mr. Albro had the study open, so if you had particular, you wanted to know more, he could elaborate on that.
I just want to know what kind of, there's a condition in the permit.
Yeah.
And it says a plan would be prepared. And I just want to know what kind of tools are in that plan to alleviate any future traffic?
Yeah, and I think as Cody was mentioning, and if you've used drive-throughs you're familiar with, they can have employees standing outside, taking orders from vehicles to keep vehicles moving through the queue. You can have, like you said, spaces available where cars can pull over if the food's taking a little bit longer, or whatever item it is. There's a lot of flexibility that can go into making sure that a drive-through operates well. And I think, especially what we found during COVID, and when drive-throughs were being used so much more than not, I think we saw that the ingenuity that went into just keeping drive-throughs flowing. And so it's a condition, so when the building permits come in, if this gets approved, when the building permits come in, this would be a requirement before the building permit was to be issued, and we would review it, planning staff and engineering staff would closely review it, to make sure that it works for that site, because it also has to be specific to that site and whatever business actually goes into that drive-through. Because there can be many different types of drive-throughs that would generate more traffic or less, depending on what it is.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I guess Frank has the report open. So when we figure out these drive-throughs, I know that the different drive-throughs have different numbers associated with them. So 16 seems like a pretty good stacking on this particular unit. So when we look at a 16-car stacking, what kind of businesses are we looking at? Is that in your report there, Frank?
Well, I can answer that.
Cody?
Yeah, so it did review a couple different types of businesses. There was a coffee shop, and then a fast-food restaurant considered?
No particular brands.
No, just generally. Part of the study did monitor local fast-food restaurants and coffee shops generally to try to get an average of the number of expected vehicles that make queue during different hours. But I don't believe, like, it was focused in on like a Starbucks, or a Dutch Bros, or McDonald's.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sefer. Go ahead. Brian, did you have an input on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The study that they analyzed was a number of sites, mostly in the Ventura, Thousand Oaks, Oxnard, Simi Valley areas. They did a whole survey based on Starbucks coffees, coffee shops, maximum queues of 14 vehicles. They also looked at national hamburger chains, let's see, average vehicles for national hamburger chains, five to 13 vehicles, McDonald's, and specifically with a drive-through of nine to 12 vehicles, and then Dunkin' Donuts, five to seven.
Yeah, thank you, Brian, because the reason I ask that is, it seems in the past, when we've had these discussions, 14 is a high number for stacking, and that seems to be the standard that we're using before, and now I'm hearing 16. So it seems like we've allowed for any type of business to go in there, and with the mitigation measures, we shouldn't have any problem with the stacking, or the parking, or the driving through that particular location?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sefer. Isa, do you have anything? Yeah? Okay, with no further questions from the commissioners, we can close the public hearing and go to discussions and decisions of the items. Commissioner Lopez, do you have any comments before we start getting into resolutions and whatnot?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just, I watched the conceptual review that the city council had for the proposal of the Starbucks at Miller and Main. And not too different of a setup, that's what, that is being proposed at Miller and That's what that is being proposed at Miller and at Santa Maria Way. And the question was brought up, or the items that were brought up was traffic. I know it's very similar because it's right in, right out at that corner. It'd be right in, right out at Santa Maria Way and Miller. And I just see it as a very similar situation. I've always had a, I was just cautious with this because that's a very fast-traveled street, right? I mean, Tim, you live out that way. It's 50 miles an hour.
That's a question, Commissioner. That particular section, because of the four-way stop, the traffic isn't hugely fast right there because it is a four-way. You've got the bank, you've got the victory car sales, you've got the yoga center, and then you've got the blank lot. So most of the traffic is just one, going one way on that street at the time. It's not a, there is a slowdown right there. When you get further up, when we were talking about the North Room and those type of projects, yes, that speed increases. But from what I found there, unless the light is green, which doesn't happen all the time, it usually slows you down pretty well.
Okay. Yeah. I think that's my biggest concern. I like the project. I like the way it looks. I like the way it sits. It's just that the drive-through is what's troubling me. But other than that, I like the project.
Is there any additional mitigations that you would suggest?
Well, the reason I brought up the Chick-fil-A, I read about it in Santa Barbara, and there was something going on with the city. And the last thing I read on it is they had a plan, and it's been working fine. So what I was trying to find out is kind of what are they doing or what did they do to keep the traffic flowing? And if it's something that would be in the developer's toolbox that they could use, and obviously it is, and at what point would that be brought forth to the city for review of the plan? Right, you said at building permits, right?
Thank you, Chair Dickerson and Commissioner Lopez. So I was just taking a look at the condition and the specific language in the condition for timing. And yeah, it states that the recommendations from the technical study that was done, the queuing study, would be implemented and reviewed and approved prior to building permit issuance. Oh, okay. Frank has more information to provide about that.
So thank you, Chair members of the commission and Commissioner Lopez. To go back to an earlier question that might answer some of your questions now. So there are three measures that are included in terms of what would happen if there were issues with the operation of that drive-through. The first measure would be an expedited ordering process, and also that ordering process might involve staff of the restaurant directing, as Cody said, cars to park at the parking in the parking lot and then bringing the orders out to those drive-through customers to keep the flow through the drive-through moving. The second measure would be more pavement striping to keep critical areas clear, like the intersection of the drive-through with the rest of the parking lot aisleways. That way, it would aid in preventing vehicles from blocking each other as one tried to park and one tried to go through the drive-through. And then the third measure would be to convert two or three of the onsite parking spaces adjacent to the building to be pickup and, or excuse me, drive-through pickup only spaces where vehicles could be directed specifically to wait for pickup orders or possibly to do call-in orders and have a staff member bring the order out and not even involve the drive-through lane.
Yeah, that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something else?
Thank you. I did want to add, one thing we found that makes a difference in drive-throughs is also where you place the ordering menu boards. So it's important to make sure that the ordering boards are placed far enough in the driveway that you have stacking space behind it. Some of the existing drive-throughs we've seen that have had queuing issues or stacking issues, the menu ordering board is right when you drive in. So there's not enough stacking space around the back, and it ends up trailing through, you know, out to a street or something like that. So for this site, we've thought about that already, and we've made sure to place the menu boards further in so that there's enough time to where you order and pick up, that there's room for cars to stack behind. So I just wanted to mention that. It is something that we think a lot about when we are looking at drive-throughs, and we try to be very thoughtful and just make sure that we're not going to have any issues with it.
Thank you. Absolutely.
So I went to Jack in the Box on Saturday, seven cars in front of me, half an hour wait. And what I found is that after the pandemic, I think those times have gotten slower. I've done 30 minutes in Starbucks, and that's what worries me. So I'm not, I really like the project. I'm just worried about, I know the traffic study was done. It was done in similar-sized city, if not bigger. It's just, that's what worries me. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. You know, and let me just ask a quick question since we're about that specific topic. I think it was, was it Santa Barbara that has that problem with their Chick-fil-A? I think so. I mean, at some, at this point, the city is looking at that as a nuisance, that they're looking at yanking the whole thing. Do we, what do, I mean, one would hope that the, that one, we've got it all taken care of for them going in initially, and that we don't have any problem. And then if there is a problem, that the developer steps in and says, we've got an additional problem, and, you know, we would like to do something. And then, of course, it flows. And if none of that takes place, does the city have something in their repertoire that they're able to take a look at and say, yeah, there's a real problem here? If that were to ever occur?
We would. And again, it is a very different circumstance than Santa Barbara, which is a mid-block, right turn in, right turn out, no additional parking. Here, we have an onsite facility that does have additional stacking spaces just internal to the facility. That because of the way that they stack, they stack in a right turn on the street. So that's why the Chick-fil-A is a nuisance, candidly. I've been there. But to answer your question directly, in the event of a circumstance where an operator, because at this point, it'd be beyond the developer into the operation, we would be dealing with the operator both through the business licensing division as well as the code to make determinations of how to minimize ongoing traffic impact.
And you're comfortable with that, with what you have?
I am.
Okay. Thank you.
I agree with Commissioner Lopez. I don't think it's so much that a traffic study is going to tell us this. I think there's staffing shortages all throughout the restaurants, service industry. So I don't, the wait times have to do with the employees inside of the building. I don't think that's something that the developer can control. It'd be something that the city would need to go to the operator and talk to them and talk about staffing and employees. I really think that's the issue. I don't think it's the plan that we may or may not use or something that the developer can do or a condition that we would be able to place because it's something difficult that all businesses are struggling with right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Seifert?
Thank you, Chair. And I guess it's, everybody's telling where they've been eating. So I too went to the McDonald's on, well, on Betarravia. And they have, it's almost a permanent fixture now. It used to be something that they kind of thought twice about, and we'll go sit in the parking lot. But they've actually now made a spot where if you're going to be a long order, that's where you go and sit, and then they've got an extra window there and the whole bit. So I think some of the businesses are getting used to the idea that they need additional ways to deliver their food. The wait line wasn't near as, that one, for whatever reason, Commissioner Lopez, that McDonald's goes very fast. But I think that they have a difference in the way that they prepare their food previously, whereas I believe Jack in the Box makes it as you order. So that could be the difference. But they have been, that seems successful. If you're waiting and then the car's going to take a long time, they stick it in that spot, and then you go around it. That seems to have been effective in that particular location. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Blanco?
Yeah, I'll just, I guess, add a little bit to that and the concern with stacking, but I think I'm really more concerned with backing up into the streets, really, not internally. I mean, if you want to, if you're okay with waiting 30 minutes, you're okay with waiting 30 minutes. You go back and you wait again, you know? But to me, it's, you know, if you start getting backed up into Miller and Santa Maria Way, even though it's not at that location maybe very fast, you know, somebody's not going to be expecting a car to be backing up and going to, you know, and going to hit the car. So if there's recourse that the city has in the future to help manage that traffic, then I think, you know, that's good flexibility because I don't think the developer can tell us definitively that there won't be an issue. But if there's a plan to manage it, particularly, you know, avoiding a collision on a public street, I think that'll be critical. I think, you know, how many times you see In-N-Out backed up to the off-ramp there at Stoll? I mean, it's just, I'm surprised nobody, you know, hit somebody there. So, yeah, I would, I support it. I'm glad that we have more capacity, but I think the plan should definitely be very cognizant of potential issues on the city streets and make sure that it's managed appropriately so that they don't have those problems. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanco. As far as I'm concerned, the first thing is I want to thank the applicants for the modifications they've made to their plans over the various study sessions. We had concerns about a number of things. You addressed them, and I do appreciate that. I also appreciate Commissioner Seifert bringing up the stacking, the 16 stacking. But Commissioner Blanco also, he brought up, for instance, In-N-Out. And it's funny because I was just talking to a couple of people over the last week, week and a half, that are really becoming concerned about the In-N-Out burger, and they are referencing what's going on down in Santa Barbara, kind of apples and oranges, but there is a lot of traffic that is streaming on to there. And unless we kind of take a look at that, turn our attention to that, and start dealing with it, the city dealing with it and asking the owners to deal with it, someday somebody's going to pay a price for that. And then we're going to look into it, and it'll have been too late for that person. So anyway, it's just something else to think about. With that being said, for me, I can support this project. You've modified it. There is that pad for the drive-through, but I've been assured by city staff that we feel like that we have, we have things in our own tool, toolbox that if it got out of hand, and hopefully it won't, that we could deal with it. So from that support, from that standpoint, I could support the overall project. But that being said, we would need a resolution to begin this whole process. And does somebody wish to, oh, was additional comments from Mr. Commissioner Seifert?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with you, Chair, about the cooperation from the applicant and UPC as to getting this project to where we could actually look at it. And everybody agreed that you've worked it to where we've asked you, and you've listened to the study sessions. I don't live far from there, more than 500 or 1,000 feet, but it will impact me, as I've said before. This is a street that I will use occasionally to get out of my residence, and I know that this is an impact on our neighbors. I know it's an impact on our neighborhood, and we had some people talking from the apartments about the parking on the street, and they're all legitimate complaints, or not complaints, but concerns. And I too am concerned as a planning commissioner and as a resident that as we do these infills and we increase, the capacity of residences, it's going to create a traffic situation, obviously. You know, I've stated in the past, I would love if we could just kind of stretch the streets out and replan from what we've done from the planners years ago, but there's no way to do that. So what we all need to do is just kind of realize that where we live is still a very, an excellent place to live, excellent traffic compared to some of the cities down south. I think we're miles ahead, and that although this will be an impact on us, I feel that it's justified, and I don't feel that it's going to be a huge impact on the neighborhoods. It will be an impact, but I think it will be a positive one, and I can see supporting your project. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make a motion?
Absolutely. Assuming nobody else has comments? Please do.
I move that by resolution. We adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program for the proposed project.
Beth, can we have a roll call? Oh, do we have a second?
I second that.
I thought Tom was going to second it over there. Go ahead.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
And Chair Dickerson?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
The second motion, that by motion, we approve the plan development permit, PD 2020-0008, and conditional use permit, U 2021-0002, as conditioned.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
0012.
Is that okay?
No, sorry. I just, I heard a different number at the end, 0012. Sorry, I think you said 0022. Did I misread that?
0002.
Ah, okay. I got a different thing on my staff.
Yeah, that's a 0012.
This is 0012. Sorry, I was just being anal.
Oh, it is 12. They changed it.
I mean, my printed copy has 0002. Which is it, Dana?
So Commissioners, what's on the screen is correct.
12.
Yeah. Thank you.
So we got the 12. Do we have a second for the 12?
I second the 12.
Do we have a, do we have a roll call, Beth?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
And Chair Dickerson?
Yes, for 12, but I wouldn't have for the other one.
34 as well.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you. Yep.
Good luck.
Oh, Beth, we were so close to the 7:30. So close. I will, I will let the crowd exit if they want to. Does anyone need to take a break? All right, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll come back at quarter till. till. Ladies and gentlemen, let's go ahead and go all the way to the second agenda item of the evening. Carrying Hands Veterinary Clinic Plan Development Permit Amendment and Conditional Use Permit at 1995 South Miller Street. Can we hear from staff? Hey, Dana.
Thank you, Mr. Chair members of the commission. My name is Charles Zinnetti. I'm presenting the subject of the project. This is one of two remaining and built pads in celebration. Development, a two-part request to revise the architectural style of the previously approved 7,000-square-foot office building to establish a veterinary clinic on the ground floor. This has been to two previous study sessions, so the commission will be familiar with this project. For those who are not familiar with the project, the mixed-use development proposal is on a 1.7-acre lot in an R2-zone district. It's located at the northwest corner of Daniel Drive and South Miller Street. And the owner's current location, their current, his current veterinary practice is located approximately 300 square, 300 feet to the south, excuse me, and right next to the Target Shopping Center over here on Miller Street. So this is a view of the original celebration project phases and build-out. It's a 6.5-acre celebration site. The original project was for a single-family development with some mixed-use buildings, offices, and residences along Miller Street. Celebration 2 subsequently came through for a proposal of 11 new single-family units that are, have been constructed. And you can see on the right-hand side, this is 2021. To date, there is just two pads remaining. One of the pads on the, on the bottom right-hand side is the project site. This is looking at the site. I'm looking from Daniel Drive up north Miller Street. It is currently undeveloped. There is an existing tenant sign that's, that's owned by the medical practice in the mixed-use building off to the left over here. This is looking west from Miller Street with the developed public plaza, a bus turnout, and parking that's used both for the commercial office uses as well as for the residences. So the design with, with the mixed-use project for Celebration 2 was proposed as a medical office, and so with normal business hours, clients and, and the tenants would be able to utilize during the day, utilize the parking lot, and then at night and during the weekends when guest parking is more in demand, it would be empty and available for the residences nearby. So this is just an overview of the celebration build-out. Celebration 3 was before your commission a few years ago. It was for a 33-unit senior housing apartment building located off Inger Street and Miller. Our current project site is located just the south on Daniel Drive. So the proposed office building is the same footprint, shared parking and courtyard previously approved in 2013. With the, the request is also a new trash enclosure that was previously approved, but it was never constructed in order to provide additional parking for, for the residents as well. That pad stayed undeveloped. This is the design of the previous office building from 2013. The architecture is a contemporary, contemporary style with standing seam metal barrel roof and a stucco exterior with stone accents and a little bit of color on, on the Wayne Scott there. The, the new owner of the property, Carrying Hands Pet Clinic, is requesting an alternate design. So this is the proposed elevation. The commission in the study session expressed a desire to see, keep with the, the contemporary, modern look. The prior, the, the apartment building to the north had a very kind of similar clean-line look, and the applicant has responded with, with this proposal here. So there's a stucco facade with steel accents. The building is approximately 34 feet tall. The maximum height in an R2-zone is 30 feet. However, the original approval was for 33 feet. And so the, as a plan development permit, the additional height would be consistent with the original approval. Just for some context, this is looking from Daniel Drive where that little, on the bottom right-hand side, there's a little yellow star that's depicting where the, where you'd be looking from. On the left is the adjacent mixed-use building, just line drawing 2D. And then on the right is the proposed veterinary building. Here's a few perspectives. We're looking from the, the, let's see, southeast corner of Daniel and Miller, and then we're going to go up Miller Drive. So this is looking from Miller. And then another look, looking west, southwest. And then this is looking from the parking lot or the public plaza, south. These are the proposed colors of material, so keeping with the, the stucco, kind of blend in with the, the Mediterranean-style stucco, and also with the steel panels and red to blend in with more of the contemporary, modern look. Aluminum window frames and iron, or I guess it's steel, arbers, and other detailing. The ground floor plan shows the veterinary clinic practice with separate dog and cat waiting rooms, waiting areas, separate exam rooms, separate kennels. No overnight stays are proposed except for medical emergencies. There's a surgery room, ambidging room, treatment area, and offices. This is a detached building, so there's minimal concern about noise or odors. There are conditions of approval included in the, the packet, in the commission's packet for preventing those noise and odors from escaping the building. So hours are otherwise limited to normal business hours except for medical emergencies. And as I mentioned previously, the veterinary pack, the existing veterinary practice is 300, 300 feet south of the project site with no reported complaints to date. This is the second floor with a proposed studio. There's an elevator and stairs to, to access the second floor, and lease areas for future medical practices, either human or pet, could be accommodated here. There's also a second stairwell that was added as this project proposal. And then landscape plan, which is consistent with the South Miller Landscape District area design, it's intended to blend in with the existing development and complement the architecture. Just a note on the environmental review, mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the original Celebration mixed-use project. With an addendum for the Celebration 2 project, no substantial changes are proposed in this project, and no significant, new significant impacts will be generated by the project that would require major revisions to the mitigated negative declaration. So in accordance with Section 15162 of the State Secret Guidelines, no further environmental review is required. With that, staff recommends the Planning Commission by motion approve Plan Development Permit Amendment A 2021-0010 and Conditional Use Permit U 2021-0006.
And those will be two separate motions, is that right? Or one motion that does both of them? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Carol. I appreciate it. Before I have the commissioners ask any questions, I am going to ask them to disclose any communications, ex parte communications with the applicant.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have spoken with Tom Martinez about this project.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I received email correspondence from Tom Martinez.
I also received email correspondence from Tom Martinez.
Me too. I received an email from Tom Martinez.
I did as well.
Okay. And, and I may have talked to you. I can't remember, Tom. Did we, did we chat? I believe so. Okay, with that, complete disclosure out there. Does anybody have any additional questions for staff at this time? No? All right, thank you very much. Why don't we go ahead from the applicant? Tom, you're up to bat.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tom Martinez, 2624 Air Park Drive, architect for the project. As you can see, this obviously is an infill project. The office building was already approved at that location. Really, just a modification of the usage and satisfying commission's, you know, requirement or actually desire for a little different style of architecture, which I think we've, we've resolved all of that. A couple of minor issues that, proverbage for future overnight usage that we address with staff and appreciate staff's working with us on that. It was a minor tweaking. The issue was regarding boarding. They really don't do boarding, but for emergency search, emergency situations, there are instances where they need to keep a pet overnight. And so it would be on an as-needed basis. It really is not considered boarding, but wanted to make sure, make sure that that was clarified in the conditions of approval. Aside from that, the site, all the site development was installed as part of the celebrations. All the drainage was addressed. So it truly is just a drainage plan. It's, there's no stormwater. That's all been taken care of. So fairly straightforward project. Mr. Farshid, KI is available, and will make ourselves available if there are any additional comments or questions from us.
Thank you very much, Tom. We appreciate it. Questions for the applicant?
What is the proper pronunciation of Wayne's coating?
I'm sorry?
Wayne's coating? I've never, we had Wayne's codding. Way, I've pronounced it Wayne's coat. What is it? Wayne's coat?
Wayne's coat.
Yes.
Thank you.
Unless you're from the south, you can say Wayne's cod.
Is that a condition?
It, it comes up all the time, and I, someone asked me that the other day, and they, like a clear story window, you know, it's not spelled that way. So I just, getting a little off-topic, thank you.
No, that's all right. I, I like the thought of turning this more into a Jeopardy-type of thing than a.
You would enjoy that.
I would enjoy that. Do we have further questions of the applicant at this time?
No.
No? All right, thank you very much. We have sort of answers. That's right. And the answer is, sit down, Tom. Let's see. Applicant presentation, questions by commissioners, open the meeting to the public. Any written communication?
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. No written communications. I also do not see any hands raised on Zoom. I'm not sure if we have anyone in the room who wants to speak. We may.
Oh, we do have a comment. Absolutely understandable, sir. Yeah. Yeah, although I think we can bend the mic down also. If you could.
Hi, I'm Dr. Desai, Camus Desai. I'm the doctor in the medical building next door to the proposed building. My only concern really is signage in the corner. I built the project about 2011 with the current rules as the project celebration was proposing with sign, the sign program that was developed at that time. I bought the property based on that sign program to make sure that I could direct patients to my building off the main street of Miller. When the current owner proposed to go to building, I said, great. If my sign gets in the way, I'd be glad to allow it to be moved anywhere on that corner as long as it's visible to the public. Instead of saying, sure, let's work with the city and get a new permit and place the sign more appropriately to allow this building to be built, he said, this is my land. I want your sign off my land. I've been following the rules of the city and the HOA and the Proposed Development Commission. So I just want to make sure that the sign stays somewhere in the corner. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other comments from, from the public? No? Would staff like to address the signage issue?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've had the opportunity to speak with Dr. Desai and the applicant. So at the time, the, there was a sign, a master sign program that was approved with the original 11 mixed-use buildings along the Miller Street frontage. With that, the, the developer at the time made a note about future signage and worked with the city for Dr. Desai's sign. In, in the event that a future building were to be constructed, that the owners would work with each other, the developer and the, and Desai, work together to allocate the, the signage appropriately. And so the city's, staff is happy to work to facilitate a, a sign design that would meet city requirements. And other than that, I believe it's just a civil issue that needs to be resolved between the applicant and, and its neighbor.
Yeah, questions for staff?
I, I think that's what the comment is about, is that they're asking for us because they've tried to have a conversation and it didn't go well. So they're, so Dr. Desai is asking us to possibly condition the project for some sign considerations for the sign.
Commissioner Seifert?
Are we speaking to the applicant or the staff right now?
Staff.
Okay, because a, a lot of projects have monument signs where they, they have multiple signage on, on one area. I would suggest that this would be a perfect location for that.
This, this project, Chair, members of the commission, this is Frank Albro. This project is a little bit unique in that when the project was initially proposed, there was one property owner, one developer. There was a subdivision of the property, individual lots. You see the individual residences on those lots. Individual commercial sites, as you can see on the upper left, that's the subdivision outlines the current parcels. This parcel that we're dealing with, with this project, like the other parcels, have been sold off to individual property owners. At the time the project originally went through, there was no provision for common signage that was established. This lot is now owned by a separate property owner, and that original developer is no longer involved. longer involved. Therefore, the situation the city finds itself in is one where the potential easements per se, or a sign program that established an easement on this property for the common signage of the overall site was never established. We don't, as, as the city staff, there's no way for us to now force this property owner to accommodate signage of an adjacent property.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank. Further questions?
So I understand that the, I guess there's no requirement, but I believe that if we wanted to condition that the signage be placed somewhere, we could as the commission. Am I correct?
I, I would, I would say that we would not have an enforceable condition to require a third-party assessment, assessing that parcel. The problem we have is that it's not a condition of this project. It's not, it's not proposed for this project. It's proposed by an adjacent property owner. And we don't have the ability to enforce that request against a applicant in front of us, because that is not something that he is legally required to do. And if he is not legally required to do it, we can't bind him to that. That would be the difficulty, to go beyond that. You could, you could say that sign, you could provide for signage, but you can't provide whose signage. It becomes a content neutral issue as well in a separation. So I would, I would strongly urge the commission to think carefully before such a condition is applied.
I think the applicant.
Yeah. Yeah, if you could, if you could step up to the.
Oh, sorry. My voice is loud.
To the lectern and give your name and.
Good afternoon. The only thing I wanted to bring up was, Mr. Desai was granted to place the signage on his land, not on my land. And when I contacted the city, I was told, we granted him to place his signage on his land. That's something should be considered. Thank you.
Carol, did you have a, did you have a comment on that?
I would respectfully disagree. There are exhibits for the approved signage that was in fact placed on this specific parcel, with, with the agreement of the property owner at that time, the previous owner.
I'm sorry, I contacted the city and I talked to the, you know, department, which is giving the permits for the sign, and I have an email from it. I can send it to you?
I'd be very happy to review that. However, if, if you were speaking with me, that would not have been the case.
No, it was someone else that specifically, I was told, we gave you permission to place the sign on his land, not your, the other land beside.
Did you have further?
Yes. So, so there is a finding that we have to make, that this project doesn't impact the adjacent landowner. It seems that this does impact the landowner because it is a mixed-use project, so signage is really important, so people can know there's a doctor there, because there is residential. So I think because of that, I would feel comfortable moving or making a motion so that this is part of the project to allow signage, being that the staff has clarified that issue.
Thank you, Commissioners. Further questions of the, of the applicant at this time? No? Let's start with rebuttal here, sir.
I'm, I'm not aware of an exhibit that Carol might be referring to, but I just know that the building permit that was issued, was issued for 315 Daniel, not for the corner address.
All right.
I would be happy to provide the, the sign permit if, if requested by the commission.
All right. Sure. Go, go ahead.
Tom, I just, so is a monument sign out of the question? Has that been brought up? Or, I mean, I mean, that way everyone gets their signage and, and we move on? Is, is that a problem? I just, I, I, it's a common situation and it's a common fix. Is that not on the table?
I don't want to have any signage, so I'm like that.
Including yours?
Mine would be, mine, that's a, I'm having the signage which is approved by the city for other signages. But many companies can have signage on its land, so that's something to say that's mine. I'm not going to put my signage on his land. I'm not allowed to do that. Why you should be allowed to put his signage on mine's? Okay. In that case, I would rather to place my signage on the other side of the street too, so I'm not allowed to.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir, why don't you go ahead? You had, you had an additional comment?
When I bought the property, there was a sign program that was brought in the city. That's the guidelines I followed literally to the T. So there was a requirement in code or in, I don't know, law or whatever, that that developer had a sign program. That sign program is not being followed on, except for my own sign.
Thank you.
So the finer was saying that there was not a sign program that sources the issue, but there is.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any further questions for the applicant or the, no? All right. Then I'll go ahead and bring it back to, I'll close the public hearing and to discussions and decisions of the item. Someone want to start?
Yeah. I think because this is the corner lot, the signage is important, whereas Dr. Desai's medical office is in between the ice cream shop and the housing development, the housing of the residence. So I think signage is important for his business, and I do think that it would impact the business. So I think I would move that we add that condition, that we do have signage for all the businesses, so that all the businesses can thrive and, you know, know where they're located. Signage, like I said, is very important. So that would be my proposal to address this issue.
Further comments? No? Okay. Does someone want to make a motion?
I move that we approve project in accordance with the application submitted. It is permit A 2021-0010 and U 2021-0006 with the additional condition that they allow the adjacent landowner to have a sign, which would be Dr. Desai.
And that would be, would that be, would staff mediate that? I mean, how big a sign? How, I mean, how?
I believe they have a sign program. That's what Dr. Desai has stated, and staff has confirmed.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, there is an active sign program. However, it, it was part of the original program, so it would need to be updated, I believe.
Carol, can we go to the counter?
Sorry about that. This is better. Okay. So the original sign program was adopted as part of the original mixed-use project, so it is a little out of date. It was from, I believe it was from 2003 or 2004. However, staff is happy to work with, with the applicant on a design that would meet city requirements.
All right. A motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
I'll stand.
Stand on that.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
And Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Let's move on. As stated, item number four is going to be the next item, which is amendments to the Planning Commission Rules and Procedures, SP 2022 through 0008.
Might I ask why our project, that project is not coming up?
Because Commissioner Lopez is, has to recuse himself, so we're, so we're allowing him to cut out our blade.
Thank you, Chair members of the commission. This is an item that the Planning Commission had requested come to them. This is a proposed amendment to the Planning Commission Rules of Procedure. These are the rules by which the Planning Commission operates, holds its meetings, et cetera. So there's three main topics that are going to be addressed in these amendments. The first topic has to do with study sessions and the time and location for study sessions. As you can see here, the proposed edits are shown in red with deleted text struck out and proposed text in underline. The first item is a change of venue for the study sessions. We have been holding those study sessions in the Community Development Department Conference Room. That room is rather small and awkward, and during the COVID times, we've been having some Zoom meetings and then also trying, had held some meetings at Shepherd Hall in the San Maria Library. Planning Commission favored holding those meetings in the larger venue, in larger Shepherd Hall. So this edit is proposed to allow the future study sessions to occur there instead of the Community Development Conference Room. In addition, later in the paragraph there, you say, you see a text where we've also provided an out, where if Shepherd Hall is not available or not fit for any reason at all, the chair may designate a place, an alternate location within the city where the study session may be held. The other item is, is more of a cleanup item. The, the rules and procedures as they're written and stand today had a time of 10:00 a.m., which we've been holding those meetings at a different time, 1:30 in the afternoon, which worked better for commission members and staff as well. So we want to recognize that change in the rules and procedures document edits that we're proposing tonight. The next item again is somewhat of a cleanup. The rules and procedures document had five minutes as the speaker time. Three minutes is more in keeping with city policies, city council standards as well. So three minutes is proposed as the typical speaker time. Of course, the chair may grant additional minutes as warranted for specific speakers. And lastly, there was a section which no longer complied with state law, whereby if a commissioner chose not to voice any vote at all, it would be recognized as an affirmative vote, which for this city attorney's office, that is no longer acceptable. So there is another provision that was important to include regarding abstentions. And as you can read that there, if they're disqualified, if a commission member is disqualified by law for participating in a given matter, that commissioner may not be counted towards the quorum for a particular item. However, commissioners who abstain by choice and voice that at the meeting or prior to the meeting are counted towards a quorum. And lastly, simply updating the date of the adoption of the most recent amendment, which would be today's date if the commissioners do vote affirmatively for these proposed changes. That concludes staff's presentation. Our recommendation is by, that the Planning Commission, by resolution, approve the amended rules of procedure, SP 2022-0008.
Frank, just so I can clarify, so if we, for some reason, we have three members of the commission, and one of them has to recuse himself, then whatever that agenda item is basically has to roll back to the, to whenever we, whatever the next date is that we can see it? Is that correct?
If I'm reading this correctly, if that commission member abstains by choice, they can still be counted as the quorum, as three members attending.
Again, a disqualification isn't really triggered by this. This is an abstention based on a personal feeling or something else. A disqualification would be handled that they would not be counted towards quorum, period. So I want to separate the abstention. If there are three members and one is disqualified at the time of the hearing, then the, the hearing would carry over to your next available meeting.
Okay.
Because you would not have an adequate quorum. An adequate legal quorum.
Disqualified for that specific line item.
Correct. It wouldn't disqualify the meeting, but for that line item, for instance, in the event Mr. Lopez is, is recusing himself from item number three, if there were only three members here, then at that point, we would lose quorum for that item, carry it over to the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other ques, any questions? No?
No question. I, I remember maybe 10 years ago, that we didn't have a quorum because everybody was disqualified, but we drew straws.
I remember that.
That, that's a different circumstance, and that's, that's a, that's a forced requirement. And it is governed by state law that does allow that. In the event a body cannot generate a quorum due to disqualifications, then there is a equal probability that everybody is affected. So a lottery or some other cards, flipping coins to provide a quorum is, is actually allowed by state law.
So something like that wouldn't carry over to the next meeting?
In, in that case, we would actually have it that night, because you would not have, you would never get an adequate disqualification. Because if you had three members disqualified, you'd never be able to get to it, carrying it over otherwise.
And that's basically taken care of because of the incestuous nature of small communities.
Oh, oh, and that's no different with city councils and anything else, especially, I used to work in a town of 10,000. Everybody knew everybody, and they were all cousins.
So you're constantly doing straws, is that right?
I had very well pulled in the cards.
All right. Any other questions about this one? No? All right. If somebody, it's a resolution, so we never.
I move that by resolution, we approve the amended rules and procedures.
Second that.
Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
And Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
It's relatively quick, Tom. I mean, in the big picture.
Okay, let's move on to what was item number three. I understand we have an abstention.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a, had a financial interest. The owner was a client. And so I will recuse myself from this.
All right.
And have a nice evening.
Thank you very much.
Betaravia Self-Storage Plan Development Permit Amendment at 1265 West Betaravia Road. Who's up? You in a way? Thank you, Chair members of the commission. This is a proposed amendment to a prior plan development permit. This is a proposed amendment to a prior plan development permit that was approved back in 2017. The project site is located on West Betaravia Road, just west of Blosser Road. And you can see the site outlined in yellow here. Here's a close-up of the site, and as you can see, the site has already been developed. And this is a development that is in accordance with the plan development permit that was issued. You notice this rear area is just open parking for RVs currently. And I'll get into the approved plan, but the approved plan had located additional buildings in this rear area for future Phase II of this development. So this is a mini storage development, and as you can see at the frontage, there's more decorative buildings, including an office building for completing leases and so forth. And these long rectangular buildings here are the storage facilities themselves. As you'll see in later pictures, these storage facilities are the drive-up, roll-up door types. So there's a picture from the frontage. There's the office at the corner, decorative facade at the front, and behind the wrought iron fencing, you can see the standing scene metal buildings, standing scene metal roofs, and metal roll-up doors. Here's a photograph from inside the facility showing the drive aisles and the roll-up doors. And lastly, here's the plan development permit. This was the approved site plan for this project. And as you'll note, this does say future building G. It also had some RV spaces with a proposed RV canopy in this rear location. So the proposal before the commission tonight is involving the proposed construction of that final phase. That final phase is entitled already, and the applicant did work with staff earlier this year on some proposed changes. I'll go back a slide. There was proposed square footage for this building and some concept about how many storage units it might contain. The applicant came to staff with a modified version with one larger building and a smaller building, again, kind of matching the ones that were up front. Being that the site had more than enough parking spaces and per our zoning code, parking spaces in a kind of reverse way drive how many units the applicant can have. They wanted to maximize the building area and maximize the number of units they had for the facility to match the parking that they were providing already. And staff, being that this was the rear of the site, very similar to the original application, not something visible from the street and not something that would have any significant changes on traffic or circulation, staff supported this modification at the zoning administrator level. So the applicant now would like to go and, after getting that approval, they were testing some models of the number of storage units that could fit and the size of the building that could fit on the site. And they do want to increase the number of units that are provided on the site over and above what they currently provide as parking. The proposed changes to the building would have made their existing parking that they're providing on site dictate the number of units that are possible. Our zoning code requires one parking space for every 10 units provided on the site. So what they were doing was essentially reverse engineering their proposal to match the parking spaces that were already on the site. What they would like to do now, what that revealed to them, however, once they started putting pen to paper, was that they were coming up with abnormally large and very unmarketable-sized storage units. They were very, very large size and not something that you would typically see for a normal storage facility. So they were aware, the applicant was aware of other storage facilities that have been approved by the city in the past. One particular one, which is also on Betaravia Road, which was also approved in 2017, is the CCLI storage facility that's closer to A Street on the south side of Blosser Road. That project also asked for a parking reduction, which through their plan development permit, the Planning Commission reviewed their proposal, found it to be satisfactory, and granted a parking reduction. So this applicant now is asking to obtain a parking reduction through the plan development permit process. That would allow them to provide additional units within the footprint of the building that they can achieve on the site. So quickly, I'll just go through this very briefly, their strategy, which is matching the strategy that was approved for the CCLI site. Looking, again, I'll mention that city parking ratio is based on the number of storage units, one parking space for every 10 storage units. And so with the current proposal of 905 storage units that they'd like to provide, they would need to provide 91 parking spaces. Again, they would like to reduce that number. So in the previous analysis that we had seen for the other site, trip generation rates were used. These trip generation rates are by the Institute of Traffic Engineers. And these are the rates showing how many car trips a site will generate. And they're looking at that generation in a timeframe of 12 hours. And these are the types of, this is the type of information we use to create our level of service studies. Engineering uses it to determine whether or not street improvements are necessary and so forth. So it's a well-established database of traffic generation. So for self-storage facilities, they identified that the average that the ITE shows is 2.5 trips for every thousand square feet of facility, storage facility. So with this facility being approximately 140,000 square feet, that would generate 351 trips over 12 hours. So over that 12 hours, those 351 trips don't happen equally in each of those 12 hours. There's what you call a peak hour, and there's a peak hour in the AM and a peak hour in the PM. So what they did was look at the busiest time, which was the PM peak hour, and ITE data shows that 35 trips would happen to and from this facility for a facility of this size. So we have the difficulty of our city ratio is based on number of units. ITE information is based on square foot. So how do you translate that? Well, part of the, part of the idea of the trips is that there's two trips for every 30, every one trip that ITE talks about. So the 35 trips that was recognized for the highest peak hour is actually 18 cars, because it's a to and from trip to the storage facility. So translating from units to square footage, they're looking now at the number of cars that would be there at the peak hour of their busiest time during any 12-hour period. And that includes to be 18 cars. And that, if they were asking for 18 cars or 18 parking spaces, that would be one space for every 50 storage units. They're not asking for that much of a reduction, however. So they're asking to reduce it to where they're providing one parking space for every 15 storage units. So again, our code requires one space for every 10. They're asking for one space for every 15, based on the information provided here. And staff supports that parking ratio reduction. Just for context, the ratio that was approved for the CCLI site was one space for every 21 storage spaces. So this will be a lesser reduction than what was requested for the CCLI site. Again, staff supports this reduction. We've not had any reported traffic or parking problems at the CCLI location, so we feel confident that there shouldn't, this lesser reduction shouldn't cause any issues on this site either. And that concludes staff's presentation. The recommendation by staff is that the Planning Commission, by motion, approve the permit amendment, A 2022-0004. One thing I would like to mention is that with all amendments, what we do is include findings for the amendment, of course, and then also conditions that relate to the request at hand, the amendment at hand. However, the other condition that I'm sure the commissioners have noticed is that we keep the prior permit alive. So all the past, all the prior conditions that were set into effect with the original PD will remain, except updated by this amendment.
Thank you very much, Frank. Before I ask commissioners if they have any questions of staff, we need to see if there's any disclosure of communications, ex parte communications with the applicant? No? No. Any questions of staff at this time?
No.
None? Okay. Does the applicant want to give us? Tom?
Tom Martinez, 2624, Aeropark Drive, architect for the project. As Carol stated, this really just, the completion of the multi-phase project, Phase II, with some minor tweaking of the parking ratio, we realized that it had been approved down the street. Ironically, when we were getting this project approved, they were appealing it. I, you know, again, it just gets frustrating with those items. But, and I did provide staff with some photos. I was in, drove through the project as we were developing these modifications. And it was on a Saturday afternoon at 1:00, and there were six cars in the entire facility, two in the public parking where we have the five requirement, and those two were the two of the employees of the office. And then I think there were, I took one of every aisle. We didn't think that you needed to see every one of those, but took one down every aisle, and I think there were three cars in the five aisles. So the parking reduction, very justified. I think Frank's pulling up one of the photos there that was the one I took. But the parking modification is very, in my mind, justified. And I would only add that I think it might be something that the staff, the city considers in future amendments to the zoning, that maybe they modify the parking requirement for that, for the storage units, because once they're occupied, they just don't get used. So we'll make ourselves available for that. My client is actually on the meeting Zoom, so if there are any questions of him, he is available. Tyson Davis? Oh, he's not?
Is he on or not? No, he's not. Anyway, Maribel, go ahead.
So there were no stacking issues? So there were no stacking issues?
No.
Yes. This isn't a Jack-in-the-Box drive-through, a restaurant, Chick-fil-A, so people don't want to hang out at storage places. Common sense, so I would agree and support the applicant in this amendment.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Chair. It seems to me, Tom, that when you use a storage facility, you drive to your locker and you do your thing, and then you leave. These parking spaces are not in front of the lockers. This is additional parking on the site?
I'm sorry.
Is it, we're talking about additional parking on the site? We're not talking about in front of the units themselves, correct?
Actually, the parking is distributed throughout the facility, and we basically have stacked parking on, you know, every second or third row. We don't have many, because again, it's just a function of satisfying the parking requirement. And normally what happens is, you know, they may back in to unload, not necessarily use the designated striping that is on those spaces.
That's what I would have thought, yeah.
And sometimes you overlap, like myself, when I back up to mine, I'll pull up into the aisle space in front of me, because when I open up my back to my car, I can slide stuff into the. So again, the parking, the location of the parking spaces almost becomes irrelevant to the entire operation.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Further questions of the applicant at this time? No? All right. Do we have any, let's open this up to the public. Do we have any written communication? No? Do we have any public out there that are pining to talk? No, I see none. And how about the Zoom?
The Zoom.
The Zoom.
Heather, we don't have any attendees on Zoom, so, nope. The line.
That's right. The internet. That's right. The web.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, then why don't we go, let's see, rebuttals, questions, public commissioners, public hearing. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and roll it back to us for discussions, decisions, and people who are pining to make motions.
I move that the Planning Commission approve the plan development permit amendment, A 2022-0004, Betaravia self-storage plan development permit.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All right. Beth?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco? Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Right down to it. Oral reports from Planning Commission and staff. Staff, any oral reports?
Yes, thank you. So I was just going to go over our schedule for the next meeting. So our study session tomorrow was canceled. We don't have any items for that. So our next public hearing will be on July 6th, and we currently have two items on that agenda. And I think that concludes the update that I have today.
Do you have anything about the study session on the 7th?
We don't have anything scheduled for it yet.
So you don't know, but you don't know.
So we don't know, but.
All right.
Dana?
I'll get back to you.
I didn't hear the date of our next meeting. When is it?
July 6th.
6th.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
There we go.